This conference will now be recorded.
Hey Zach, this is Chuck.
Oh, perfect. Okay, I was just about to ask who that was.
Um, I, I've got the audio on the phone and the video on my computer.
Sounds good. I can hear you. For everyone just jumping on, as you're jumping on, if you're a guest, I'm gonna have you muted and until public comment period, at which point I'll kinda go down the line to see who's joining us.
Good evening, Mr. Kendall. I see you're online with us. Okay, it is 6 o'clock, so I will now open the January the 25th meeting of the City Council, and we will have the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item on the agenda will be approval of the minutes from the January 11th meeting.
I move to approve the minutes for January 11th, 2021. Second.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the minutes. Would the clerk please call roll?
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kahar?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item will be statement of the bills paid in the amount of $231,929.77.
Mr. Mayor, this is Chuck Adams. I make a motion that we approve the statement of bills for the amount of $231,929.77.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and a second to approve the statement of the bills paid. Would the clerk please call roll?
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kahar?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Okay, the next item will be requests or comments from the public. Zach, have you received any requests?
Uh, we did one call in from a Bruce Holland back in 9664 Crestwood Drive. Um, he's requesting some, that some action be done on the closure of that section of Speaker Road. Um, I believe he's requesting that it be, or at least reopening of it be reviewed. He's voiced a concern about this in the past. He's got access issues. His, his property doesn't directly access that section of Speaker Road, but the way he backs into his property, um, that section that we closed, he said it's more difficult to access it with that section closed, so I'll have forward this over to the Public Works Director for his review.
Okay, thank you very much.
And that's all that I, that's all that I've received. If you are joining us via your web browser and would like to make a comment, please send me a, a chat and while you're, a note, a note in the chat, and while you're doing that, um, let me see if we've got any just call-ins. I don't believe we do. If we do have anyone just calling in and you would like to make a comment, I'm gonna go ahead and unmute you. And I'll open up the floor, just kinda speak up and Mr. Mayor, I'm not receiving anything in the chat and nobody seems to be
Move on to the next item on the agenda, and that will be Consider 2020 Special Law Enforcement Trust Fund Report.
Hi, I think I'm there. Audio, is that right?
Is there?
And the video, did it come up? Okay, hey, there it is. Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. This is the Special Law Enforcement Trust Fund Annual Report. This is the third of such reports. And I'll draw your attention to the background information. That first paragraph shows you the purpose of the report, which is that annual reports of the governing body detailing the type and approximate value of forfeited property received, the amount of the proceeds received, and the proceeds that were expended. And in a unique situation, and I've explained it in the past, that technically in this fund are not asset forfeiture funds. There have been in the distant past, but the funds that are actually there now and being reported to you on a monthly basis uh, through our general fund reports is, are actually tax assessment proceeds that the state of Kansas levied against a person who was caught with a, a, a certain amounts of illegal drugs. And thus, there's a sharing program with the state of Kansas to the local agencies, and that is the money that's actually reflected in this account. However, we're gonna do the report, and just to ensure some compliance, I'll draw your attention to the, uh, the actual ending balance of that account. Yeah, we, we put in a placemaker in this report because there was actually a data entry error that attributed some funds in the amount of only $14.71 to this account, which, which since the publishing of the memo has been rectified, and so the actual ending balance is $122.39. We've made a deliberate effort to spend this down just so that we have a clean slate, because we are due soon for some asset forfeiture proceeds to be uh, placed in this account, and we wanted a clean kind of start, if you will. So with that, I'll stand for any questions, and we act, I ask you to accept this report.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions? Mayor, if I just might add to Mr. Chief Mathies' report, one of the things that we'll probably be doing and coming back before the council to create it will be a separate law enforcement fund. So these, so there are other items that come to the police department through their, their actions that should not go into this fund, as Chief Mathies says, but yet we still need to allocate for them, and in lieu of just placing them in the general fund, we think it would be appropriate that we have a separate fund, and that that fund has certain parameters around how those funds might be used. So we'll be bringing that before the council, probably in the next meeting or two, to just set up that new fund for all the other things that don't go into this one. So just FYI. Yeah, this report does not require any council actions, is that correct?
No, it doesn't.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions of Chief Mathies or Mike Whip?
What was, what was the transaction? What, what did you say you got with the $580?
Um, we actually made an effort to reduce the number of foam cups and plastic cups and plastic bottles by purchasing individualized Yeti cups so that they can take them out in their patrol cars and that sort of thing. That's what we did with it.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, if there are no other, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, and that is to consider the mayor's appointments to the Cemetery Parks and Public Spaces Board.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the recommendations of Thurman Gardner and Troy Thompson to the CPPS Board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the mayor's appointments. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, if there are none, would the clerk please call roll?
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kahar?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, the next item is a here presentation related to Wyandotte County Library Board, and on, online with us tonight, we have Carol Levers, the Director of the Library.
Um, Mr. Petey, I was picking up some background noise on your line, so I'm not sure if you were by a fan or, or something.
Her, by the way, Zach.
Say again?
I said her.
Oh, her, sorry.
P P is Pat Pitty.
Got it.
Okay. Pat, you're on, online. Zach, you need to unmute them.
I am doing so now.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Taggart. And also, council members, thank you so much for the invitation. Um, with me, I have Senator Pat Pitty. Um, I've prepared a PowerPoint, and she will lead us into the full of PowerPoints.
Thank you, everyone. So, yes, I'm, I'm Pat Pitty. I chair the Wyandotte County Library Board, and you know, the library board. So if you take a look at this funding table here, you can see uh, that in Wyandotte County, there are three libraries, uh, boards. There's the USD 500 school, school district, school board is the library board for the, for the Kansas City, Kansas libraries. That is, that is separate from the, the libraries that are in the school district themselves. Then there's a Wyandotte County Library Board that you, that is made up of, it's called the Pet District. That's Piper, Edwardsville, and Turner. And then there's the Bonner Springs Library Board. Um, so residents of District 500 are within the boundaries of the Kansas City, Kansas uh, school district, or Kansas, yes, Kansas City, Kansas School District, and then residents of Piper, Turner, and Edwardsville are in the Wyandotte County Library Board District, and then residents of Bonner Springs are in the City of Bonners Library District. Um, as you look at the bottom of this, you can see that the, that we, the Wyandotte County Library Board, we contract with the Kansas City, Kansas Public Libraries, and the Bonner Springs City Library to provide services. Want it. So there was an, so when, uh, there's an interlocal agreement among the, the Piper, um, well, among the those three entities to provide, to, to provide the property taxes that fund the libraries, that fund services that we contract for, for the Pet District.
So Ms. Pitty, if, if you need him to advance a slide, just say that you need a slide advanced and Zach, uh, keep moving forward with you.
Okay, so Zach, go ahead and advance this one. So you can see that, um, with, if you look at this side, where, where the funding goes, this is, and this is, um, this was set up when the, where there was a reorganization of the Wyandotte County Library Board um, right in, in 1999, and your mayor actually chaired that, uh, at the time he was Commissioner, and, and I, he and myself as well, we served on that regular organization board. Um, so you, and that was, this determination was made of where the funding would go, and that was based on, um, usage. So, um, the city, 14% of the money that comes in, as you can see, goes towards the City of Bonner Springs to provide, um, to provide, I'm sorry, 7% to provide, um, the services. 14% go to, to pay for the Turner Library, uh, and then the 79% goes for contracting with Kansas City, Kansas to provide the services. And I, should be clear that the library that's located in Turner, um, is, um, it is run by, and we contracted for the services with Kansas City, Kansas, but it shows a separate line out in there as far as funding, but we do contract from them to provide the services. You, does anybody have any questions before we proceed?
This is Chuck Adams. Yes, I have a couple of questions.
Okay, Chuck. Maternal, I hear. They usually don't sit in this place, but the, the noise is too loud the other way. Go ahead. Go ahead, Chuck.
Mr. Adams?
Uh, yeah, you mentioned that the monies are dispersed according to usage. How is usage measured?
Um, so, well, this, Carol's gonna get into that a little further, but I, I guess I, maybe that's not the best term to say usage. Um, but we did, there was, originally, we, when we reorg, we did the reorganization in 1999, there was, uh, there was a survey that was done to see if people were, that lived in the Pet District were actually using the libraries in Bonner, because Bonner, uh, felt that they, uh, were providing services, and so then that's how the percentage was developed.
Um, and the second question is, why are we looking at 2018, uh, numbers and not 2020 and 21?
Um, so this was the most recent, uh, slide that I had available to me.
So what differences are there between the 2018 and 2020 budget?
Uh, we did have, um, although I don't have the 2020 budget, uh, that I'm looking at right at the moment, we did actually, though, the, the, on, on the individual homeowner, the, the percentage did go up, um, to, I think, a six, 6%. I mean, it didn't go up 6%, but I think it was, uh, raised to that amount. In comparison to Kansas City, Kansas, there's, I'd like it 11.
Has there been, ever been any other survey other than the 1999 survey?
You mean of usage, or?
Yeah, of usage.
Uh, so the, yeah, so the libraries themselves, um, provide that every year.
And, and once again, how is the usage measured?
Excuse me?
How is the usage measured?
So I think that you'll be able to see that in some of the slides as we proceed.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, Zach, you can move ahead. So here, so Chuck, here, as you can see, this shows the current, um, the current budget for 2020. And you can, if you look down there, you can see that in 2019, it was, uh, well, that the mill rate has stayed the same, but the amount of money actually, or the, the percentage of funds that were generated by that actually did increase slightly. But the mill rate stayed the same. So if you look along, um, in the second reserve, and second box, you can see there as you go across. And then the lower level, or the lower part of this, uh, slide presents, uh, the current and historical from 17 to now of spending with what we contract for services with Kansas City, Kansas, the Turner Library, and the Bonner Springs Library. Anybody have a question?
I might just, for, for clarity, Ms. Pitty, just so everybody's following, so if, if, on that far right column over there, it's their 2021 posed forecast, and down, as you, as you come down, where it says Bonner Springs Library, the 235-807 is what is allocated from the Wyandotte County Library fund to the Bonner Springs Library, and that is, if you recall the presentation I provided in November, uh, that is consistently presented in November to the City Council, so if you're already online, I know these, these types of presentations can be difficult sometimes, so try to, Zach, try to point out.
And Pat, can, can you refresh my memory? The, the Turner Library, you said that was the PDP, the Turner, Edwardsville, Piper?
Oh, right. It's called the Pet District. It's Piper, Edwardsville, and Turner.
Okay.
Sure. Population-wise, uh, Turner, uh, makes up the largest amount of the population within the Pet District.
Okay. Will, will there be anything a little bit later about how many locations are in each one of those areas?
Uh, so, there, I'm not sure that Carol, so we contract with services with the Kansas City, Kansas Library, so there is not a library location in each one of the Pet Areas. Um, there was an interlocal agreement that was, um, developed, I think, around 2000, no, a little bit later than 2000, with, uh, with Turner, probably about 2002, with Turner, to, uh, where that was when the establishment of the Turner Library became a, a possibility. That was bought about by petition from the Turner community, several petitions in fact, and then also with the interlocal agreement, the facility was provided because a school was being closed at that time, and, um, so that led to availability of facility, and then it continues to be an interlocal agreement between the Unified Government, the Turner School District, and the Kansas City, Kansas uh, Library Board to provide for the space, and then, of course, they provide the services that we uh, pay for at that location. There is not a location in Piper, and that, not to say that, or in Edwardsville, but of course, all of those would, any changes like those would involve, uh, a community-driven request, and then the ability to figure out how to fund it.
So, Mr. Adams, I think you asked, uh, but I may be wrong, that there was some question about uh, pay, number of patrons and library cards and some data like that, and, and they will be presenting that in their presentation here in a few slides. That may be helpful for your questions. Sorry, I have a printed copy of it here.
So, go ahead, Zach, and proceed. Carol, are you taking this one?
Yes, I'll do. Thanks, Pat.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Uh, so we're gonna, uh, just show you a couple, uh, budget comparisons uh, with the Wyandotte County Library and the Kansas City, Kansas, uh, Library. Sorry, I thought somebody was asking a question. Um, this is the Wyandotte County Library Budget, and just to bring it down to the smallest denominator, is the levy rate for Wyandotte County Library uh, for, is 6.122. And if you ask what the impact is for a, a homeowner, if you look at somebody that owns a $50,000 house, will pay $2.93 a month for library services, and you can go down there, one that owns a $100,000 house will pay $5.87 a month, and one that owns a $200,000 house will pay $11.79, uh, so 73 cents, um, per month. Zach, if you could go to the next one, that's 6.122 for the Pet District. The next one. This is the Kansas City, Kansas Public Library Levy Rate, and as you can see, their rate is 11.168934. Um, double, almost double, and it used to be nine point something, but about five years ago, um, I went to the board because the public libraries, the Kansas City, Kansas Public Library did not have a capital fund. We always had to depend on the school district to fix everything in, in all the libraries. Um, and funding was getting scarce for the schools as well, so we decided, uh, the, the board decided then to increase uh, the levy to, uh, two points, to 11, uh, so that we could use those 2% uh, and start a, a capital fund for the library district. Um, so as you can see, for a homeowner in, uh, the USD 500 District that own a $50,000 house pays $5.35 per month for usage of library services, and you go down, if you uh, own a $200,000 house, you pay $21.41, or they pay $21.41 per month for usage. So you could see the difference between the two areas. Next one, please. These are the five libraries, the main libraries on Minnesota Avenue, and we have the Miss and Mrs. Effo Schlegel, almost in Piper, and then we have South Branch Library, um, that's in Argentin, the Turner Community Library, obviously in Turner. Uh, we have the mobile libraries, we have three of them, and we have the West Wyandotte Library. Next one, please. Just another picture of our, um, mobile libraries, so that you guys, you know, we didn't have the other one. Next, please, Zach. So this is some, uh, statistics that I just put together. of the active library cards and E-cards at Kansas City, Kansas Public Library to kind of indicate where the patents are from. And you could see USD 500 residents of the USD 500 School District. Under the one chart, you could see we have 65,409 active cards in USD 500 areas. And, and you can see the, the graph there is like 72%. Reciprocal borrowers, that's borrowers outside of Wyandotte County. That's Casey Mo, Johnson County, et cetera. We have 10,631 people, you know, coming into the area and using the libraries as well. Then we have Turner, 7,403 people in Turner has active library cards. And as you can see, it's about, it's so small, I can't, 8%. Piper, residents of Piper School District is also, is about 5%. And they, there's about 5,093 people with active library cards. ILL means interlibrary loans. That is interlibrary loans throughout the whole area. And, and we have about 1,753 people that actively make use of our interlibrary loans. Bonner Springs, we have 1,013 people with active KCK library cards. And that's about 1% of our service area. Edwardsville, we have 746 people with active library cards. And that's also about 1%. So in all, all of Wyandotte County, we have active 92,048 people with active library cards. Next one, please.
Carol, before you move forward, when you say active library card, does that include? So if I'm a household, you know, it's me and the wife and two kids, does each person receive a card? Or is that a household that has a card?
It, it, it could be a household depending, some people, especially we have homeschoolers that use one card only and they, they check out for the whole family. So, so we do not count the six kid or, you know, the mom and dad, or the whole family individual. We just count the card.
Thank you.
Yeah. And sorry, I, I didn't see the bottom on my screen of the slide. And if you look at the, the bottom portion, E-cards. E-cards has become so relevant right now, especially this past year because, you know, the libraries close, even though we still operate fully with curbside services. So in other words, everybody in Wyandotte County, Pet Districts included, will all serve the same this past year. The only difference before they, Pet District people would travel to the library, you know, to get out stuff. But with our E-cards, we have an E-library card now. We have people who applied for those cards. And you can see Bonner Springs, 93 people went online and applied for the E-card. Edwardsville, 304 additional people of the ones that we had up there applied for the E-card. Piper, 938. Turner, Turner is the only one that's kind of, because of the one zip code that overlaps, 66106 is both in Turner and USD 500. So unfortunately, we could not extrapolate the two, you know, we had to put them together. So that's the reason why Turner is with USD 500. So 7,299 people applied for E-cards. And of course, reciprocal borrowers, we had 3,060 people. All in all, additional to that 92,000, we had 11,694 people apply for E-cards. And again, as your question was, it's, it's one card maybe per family. We, we don't know. We can't say, we just, we just, we just have to report what we see. And of course, you can see the, the card, the chart there, percentage wise. Question with that?
I'm sorry, I think I missed the definition of reciprocal.
Reciprocal borrowers as people outside of Wyandotte County, Missouri, Johnson County, Mid-Continent, those are reciprocal borrowers. People who need a specific item that they don't have in their system, we offer to lend it to them. And in, in turn, there could be something that one of our people, whether they in Piper, Edwardsville, Turner, they need a specific item, they will go through our, letting us know that they need. And if we don't have it, we go outside of our system to get for our patrons.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next one, please, Zach.
Well, I had a quick question while we were looking at that chart, if it's okay.
No problem.
When I'm looking at it, it looks like Turner is getting much, a lot of use out of their library services at 8% likely because they have a location right there in their community. I was wondering, do they pay the same 6.122 mill levy as Edwardsville? Or do they pay higher for that service within their own community?
They pay the same. They're part of the Pet District. All the Pet District, which is Piper, Edwardsville and Turner, all three are under the Wyco Library Board. They, they do that. They pay the 6.122 levy, yes. The only, only difference with, with Turner, Turner has an agreement with us because they, they, they offered their own building, they maintain their own building. We just come in with our furniture and our books and our staff to run a library for them. If that makes sense.
Sure. Thank you. I appreciate you clarifying that.
You're welcome. Next one, Zach. So this is the total checkout for our library print services. And it's, it's, it's again, Piper, and we have 2019. We don't have the 2020 numbers yet. I mean, the 2020 numbers will be lower down, but it just shows you by month what we've checked out. For, we'll just look at Turner for instance. Turner has checked out last year, January, 472 items. Not, sorry, Edwardsville. And you go to, well, next slide is, is going to be different. But anyway, it just shows you by month, each area, how, how much they check out. So we can, at any time over the month, tell you how many items have been checked out. You know, for maybe just, if you just talk about Edwardsville. The total of in 2019, we checked out 834,397 items. And that is for everybody, for the, for the, for the Pet Districts. If you can just look at the PED, that's Piper, Edwardsville, Turner, Bonner Springs. And of course, USD 500, I'm sorry. I mean, all of them, that's what we did in 2019. And it gives you an idea, percentage wise, obviously USD 500 takes 76% of that whole checkout item. And if you go, next slide.
Wait a minute, Carol, I, I might just add, because sometimes it, sometimes it gets confusing. And it probably is not the case for, for the Edwardsville City Council. But just clarify that, that USD 500, that's just in the, the six libraries that Carol showed you the picture of. That is nothing to do with usage within the schools themselves. It's just in the libraries for District USD 500.
The money does not, the, all the money allocated for the Kansas City, Kansas Public Library is spent on the Kansas City, Kansas Public Libraries only. All the monies allocated by the Wyandotte County Board, allocated for the Pet Districts is just spent on Piper, Edwardsville and Turner. And the monies don't cross, the money, we have to send a quarterly report to the Wyandotte County Board, you know, quarterly, obviously. And the, the USD 500 Board of Education also gets that same report to make sure that it's done properly and it's, you know, the way it should, should have been done. But there's no money. I, they've asked me to oversee the school libraries as well. But basically, just to make sure that they have up-to-date books for the schools. And, but they supply their own money for the schools, for me to operate the school libraries. So I really have to report to three different boards and show them that the money is being used appropriately. Next one, please, Zach. So this is the 2020 physical checkout. As you can see, Edwardsville in this past Jan, not this past January, they checked out 437 items. And in February, you can see right down until the, the totals for the year was 1,712. And the total for the whole area was 263,097. But can you see the difference? When the libraries were closed, our circulation went down on print items. But if you, if we go to the, the following slide, Zach, would show the E, that will show you how the E-library has shut up. Because people went on to their laptops and their iPhone and their phones, et cetera, to, to read or to serve the internet or serve or look something up in the library online. So we have signed a contract with an outside, with our companies, Hoopla. And you can get audio books, comic books, eBooks, movies, music, television series. And, and, you know, anything that, that we could get online to make sure that the people of Wyandotte County has somewhere to go and something to do, seeing that COVID has really restricted us so much. And you can see how much was checked out January, you know, each month. So if you look at the total, the whole of Wyandotte County checked out 68,420 items online. That's apart from the ones that some people came to the library and, and picked up at curbside that I've showed you in the earlier slides. So, you know, the, the E-library really took flight. And people, those who've never been used to it are now comfortable with it. And, you know, and I would, you know, even entertain that and, and, you know, welcome, I mean, just offer that to you. If you go to your apps store on your phone or your, or your computer, just go to kckpl.org and download that app. If you have that app on your phone, you have the whole library on your phone. You can read a book on your phone, you can listen to music, you can watch a movie, you can read a comic or whatever you want. You, you will have your. I assume that was a train or something?
I'm sorry. I'm in Topeka and the hotel that I stay at is by the train tracks.
Oh, okay. No problem. And then that was the 2019 Hoopla and E-library platform 20. You could see how we jumped from 64, 68,000 items shared. We checked out 94,414. And again, it goes across, you can see audio, comic, eBooks, movie, music. And, and, you know, I don't think, I, I think this was a good year for our E-library community. And I don't think people will go back because they find, some find it easier, although some, like myself, will still like to have the book in my hand. But, you know, everything is different now. And at least we could, we can offer services differently. And, and we can meet the people where they are instead of not being able to have the services. Because I had to bring the mobile libraries back in because obviously it's such a confined space that we didn't want to expose students, you know, going in and out of the library and also expose the staff. So the, the, as soon as we get our vaccinations, we'll have the mobile libraries out in the areas again to do whatever they, they need to do. Zach?
How often did the mobile library, libraries visit Edwardsville?
Uh, once a week.
And when, when did that stop?
Uh, when, uh, when the COVID started, when we were.
They were coming to Edwardsville once a week until like March of 2020?
I.
I don't remember seeing them. And, and so I was wondering if you had any, any record of that?
I, I, I don't right now, but I can get it for you with the, the exact dates when that happened. And also, you know, we had a lot of places that we contacted that we, that people just didn't come out to, to make use of that services. So they, then it stopped to one place only. But, you know, we are open to wherever the need is. That's the reason why these buses were purchased to, 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 to serve the people, you know, that needs it most.
Thank you. If, if you're able to find that information, I think that would be really helpful. I appreciate it.
No problem. Will do. Zach? Okay. Well, last is just one, this is done almost 10 years ago. We just kind of put a little postcard together to give people the idea of what a library really offers or at least saves them. Right now, you can check up on, out up to 50 items, not items, but books in a library. That's adults and kids books. Audio books, you can borrow up to 15. This just shows you how old this handout is, but I thought that's the only one I had right in my hand to share with you. Movies, we've pushed it up to 15 movies a time checkout. Because we knew that people were confined and they needed all these things. You know, people couldn't, didn't want to come to the, the library for, for three movies every other day or once a week. And that's the reason why we pushed it up to 15. Same with CDs, it's 15 items. Magazines, you can borrow as many magazines you want. Obviously, computer usage, but it just gives you an idea of how much it'll cost if you go privately and you needed to, to, to use this. It will cost you about $935, you know, to attend the program or to have somebody do research for you. And your library is free because you, you pay for that with your taxes. And, and this is just an idea to show people how much they save by using and utilizing their public library. And just your information, just the addresses if you need to go to a library in or near, near you. But like I say, now nobody even goes to the library because they have the library in their, their hands. The, I don't know if there's anything other that you needed, wanted me to talk about, but this was the last slide.
Carol, you, you might share with them if they aren't aware that about in-person service right now.
The what service? Sorry, Pat?
In-person right now, in-person service still is at the, at the libraries. You're still not open for in-person service, correct?
Right. And I think I did mention that at the beginning, that we have curbside. But if you need printing and you don't have a printer at home, you can just send it via email to our librarians. We will print it out for you and have it ready for you to pick. We will print it out for you and have it ready for you to pick up. All you do, you drive up to the parking lot. There's a telephone number right on the curbs there. And you call us and just say you at number one, number two, or number 10, and we'll come out and bring you whatever you put on hold, any item you put on hold and whatever you wanted to print. Our librarians are still at your service for any question that you might have or research that you need them to do. The only thing that we we don't allow is for people to come in and browse until, you know, because we work very closely with the health department. So once we move out of this phase, we will definitely open up again.
So this is Mike, just a couple of things. I would just say to the council, you know, if you have questions that you want us to gather information on, feel free to to, you know, send Zach and or I just an email message and we'll try to collect those together. And then for Carol and and Patty, thank you again for being here. But can you speak to, I I think the library has future, you know, some future plans. And I don't know where those are at, but is there anything that you might want to mention about kind of going forward? Obviously, the pandemic has changed a lot of things. Just future plans of the library might be useful for the council.
Certainly, as I mentioned a couple of years ago, you know, we we kind of evaluated all the buildings in the USD 500 areas. And we knew that it was time for us to to up the maintenance of these buildings. But obviously, as I mentioned, we did not have a capital fund and I had to go to the board to 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 show them exactly what each of the buildings needed. We and of course, the biggest one was the main library. But we knew that, you know, we won't have enough funding to start there. So we started with the little one, which was the Ethel Schlegel Environmental Library. I don't know if you know the history that the UG and Parks and Recs was we were supposed to build a double, two floors. And there wasn't enough funds, so they just built the one floor. And we could add, two years ago, with the capital fund, complete that. So Ethel Schlegel can go for a couple of years now without major renovations. We fixed a West Wyandotte Library. West Wyandotte Library had five service areas. In other words, they had a circulation area, they had a video area, they had a reference area, they had a children's area, and they had a hub, five different areas. And if you open, if we open up the library doors, I had to have each area manned. And my, the HR was going through the roof. So we renovated West Wyandotte and made one service area. So when you open those doors, the doors can be operated with just at least two people at one desk instead of five people at at the beginning. So that that in the long run will really serve as well. So so and as you know, the library at in in Argentina is fairly new, not major issues there. So we concentrating now on the main library. The main library is so drafty, there's no insulation. It was just cinder block, cinder block. We have a old elevator that they can't even repair anymore. And we just kind of keep our fingers crossed and pray when you get into the elevator. You know, it it there was just so much issues with the the main library that, you know, we showed the board that we needed either a new library or at least they need to build that new library. And so the library, the board then asked a architect to come in and do a feasibility study to make sure that, you know, that what we were telling them was really happening within the building. And they came after a year of study, gave a report to the board, let the board know that indeed the building needs either a complete renovation or a complete new building. Because our library is kind of landlocked, we the we can't do too much in expanding because we need parking as well. So now they looking at working with the UG and other entities to see what the best or viable what would be the best plan to go forward. The board is still contemplating and they're listening to suggestions. And right now, we don't have a definite plan as to what they're going to do or where they're going to build if they build a new library. So but that's still in the works and they they're working with groups in the area.
Have you done any studies looking five, 10, 15, 20 years down the road as to what the actual physical needs will be of a of a library versus, you know, to determine what the impact of the internet is going to have on the physical space of libraries?
Yeah, and that that it was included in in the feasibility studies. That's why they took their time, because they were thinking in terms of 15, 20 years out, you know, and thinking of revitalization of downtown. Because it is the main library, we want to build for then and not just build for now. So that that was included in the feasibility studies, yeah. And it's online on, I'm sorry.
Would it be possible to share that feasibility study with us?
It is on our website. If you just go to our website, you you, you know, you could do that. But I can also send you the link.
That would be great if you would do that.
Okay. And and was that, can I just send it to the?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
You happen to have the mail that goes out each year to pay for the costs of the Turner Library?
Sorry, I didn't hear the first part of your question. Do I have the what?
I was wondering if you happen to know how much is spent each year out of the library board budget to pay for the expenses of the Turner branch?
It's in, you've got it on the second.
Second slide.
And slide will give you everyone's, every area, that one, yeah.
Look down to the lower box.
Turner and will be, 21 will be 400,000,000.
And do you know about how much Edwardsville contributes each year to the library fund?
That I, that has to come from.
Mike should have, your city manager should have that. That would be determined by the number of households.
Households.
Okay.
Mike is. Yeah, I don't I don't have the exact number for me, but it's roughly around 450 to 500. Is that correct? I think we calculated in, it's in excess of $500,000. I I would, I I get you the exact number for the entire. The Bonner Springs portion that comes out is somewhere around half, so it may be 400, 450 to 500,000, I think, is the number. The one goes over to Bonner is approximately we collectively as a community contribute access.
You, I believe you had shared the mill levy rate for the KCK and also the Turner. Did you share the mill levy that Bonner Springs is paying for the library?
No, we didn't.
Bonner Springs collects their own mill levy for their own library. So those don't mix, so.
Okay, do we know what that levy is?
It's about three, it's about three mills is what they have in their budget for the library.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Yes.
Does the Wyandotte County Library Board contribute to Bonner Springs Library? Or they their own entity?
No, if you go, if you look on this same slide that's up there, look at the bottom where it says Bonner Springs Library. You can see the, under the 2020 budget, the amount of money that's going to the Bonner Springs Library from the from the Wyandotte County Library Board.
Thank you. Sorry, it's hard, since I don't have the everything in front of me, it's hard to remember at all. But that is helpful. How much is budgeted in the capital projects for for coming up? How much is in that budget right now?
You mean from the Wyandotte County Library Board, Wyandotte County Library Board? We don't have a capital, we 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 don't own any buildings at all. So we just, we contract for services.
Okay, so when when.
You can see there's reserves. We have reserves for potential future partnerships, but we don't own any buildings.
So who pays for the updates of the Schlegel Library in the main, the main library branch? Where does that money come from?
Kansas City, Kansas School District, School Board, Kansas City, Kansas School Board. Any of those things that Carol just talked about, those updates that were done for the Kansas City, Kansas Libraries, those are come, those come out of the Kansas City, Kansas Library. Well, out of their budget. We we don't pay for their, that's why she said that that she had to go to the Kansas City, Kansas. If Zach could go back to the very first slide. The very first slide.
Another one?
Keep going. Very first slide, there. That's why when Carol mentioned about going to the board, she was going to the USD 500 School Board to talk to them about having a capital a a fund specifically for updating their libraries that are owned by the District USD 500 School Board. I have to tell you, you know, we're, we're very unique kind of in the country as far as the structure of how our library services are provided in Wyandotte County. In most counties, you have, like it's Johnson County. You have a Johnson County Library Board, Johnson County Library Board provides services for all of Johnson County. So we're in a very unusual situation. It's all historically based on how things began. And it started with Kansas City, Kansas as a setting up the first libraries. And then it just kind of continued in place. There've been discussions over the years about some kind of a change. But you have to take into consideration always when that comes up, who actually owns the facilities? And that's why I want to make it clear, the library, Wyandotte County Library Board that you're a part of, we don't own any buildings. The only facilities that are owned, now the Turner Library, that building is owned by the Turner School District. And so they're providing that facility. And Kansas City, Kansas, who we contract with, is providing the services. So that's one of the, always one of the things that comes into play. You're asking about expansion or whether we had a capital campaign fund. So we have reserves. There are potential for, there could be expansion, but always is dependent on who wants to be a partner and what is going to be provided. If that makes sense.
It it does. I, and and what we're doing, because we're a pretty small city with a lot of tax dollars going out. And so when I'm asking questions, I'm just trying to make sure that we're getting as much as we can out of service for each tax dollar. And so when I'm comparing potentially over 500,000 a year coming out or up to $10 per household that we looked at are $11 for the $200,000 households. And it was, I think, eight or so for the increment less than that. And not having services within our own community, I'm just trying to see if that, if it's equitable when we're looking at paying the same mill levy as Turner in comparing to maybe what Bonner's getting for three mills. And then they're still getting 212 or so thousand dollars every year from the Wyandotte County Library Board. It just seems like we're not getting served equally between Bonner Springs, Piper, Turner, and Kansas City, Kansas. We're kind of on the low end there. And so I don't know if there's any talk or has the library board discussed expanding their future services to Edwardsville or just serving this community a little bit more?
So again, remember, I said we don't own any facilities. So, you know, that certainly would be something that you as a, as the Edwardsville City Council could consider whether you have, do you have a building? Do you have a facility that would be, could could be used for library services? Not every building is, you know, really can, but but do you have? I mean, that's why I'm trying to be clear about how did it come about that Turner, who, again, of the Pet District, Turner is the largest population wise as well. But that's how it came about for Turner. Now, there have been, in the past, there have been preliminary conversations in Piper about that very thing, but never, they they have never proceeded to move forward with any sort of proposal. The same, I mean, but the same thing could be true for Edwardsville. You would, you know, you would have to make that, you would have to look into that as a, you know, as a entity, whether you want it, whether you had a facility to do that. So that, yes. But then I think the other thing you have to think about is, okay, distance wise, if you, some people might be close to a library, whether they live in Kansas City, Kansas or where they live in Turner. And some might, people might be just as, or whether they live in Bonner might be just as far as you feel like Edwardsville is. Because right now, it's, you know, I don't know the exact mileage between, say, the Turner Library and Edwardsville or the Turner or the Bonner Library and Edwardsville, both of which would probably be the, or the West Branch. For some of your residents, one of those could be closer than, might be for someone else who lives in Turner, for the Turner Library or or any of the other libraries that are available. So sometimes distance isn't always it, always, I guess the big thing is whether citizens are taking advantage of the services that are available.
Yep, Pat, you had mentioned, I think, just a few minutes ago that that it would be something to consider if the city had a facility that could be used. And you said if it met criteria, I think is, does the board have a written set of criteria that 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 outlines what is an acceptable space?
No, but the but the, Carol and her staff, they, for example, a few years ago, there was an interest in in wanting to expand the Turner Library. And so there was a facility that was offered or that's, that was offered for that. Or actually, there have been two different places that have been offered for them. Both of them were looked at by facility, facility managers about the capacity, not just, not just the people capacity, but the weight capacity, whether they could actually handle the materials that you would have to have in those facilities. And in both cases, neither one met that criteria. So if there was a facility, I mean, Carol's the best one to answer this, but if there was a facility, then it. then it would be a matter of you, your engineering staff that you have on board, as well as library people coming in and, and assessing it for being able to, to handle the, the need that was being, or the, the potential use of a library.
Yeah, I think that's something we might, might want to look at as we are looking at and designing maybe some new facilities for the city and what it would, what would meet your criteria in that development to, um, for us to consider a library location in Edwardsville. How do we go about, um, that discussion with your group?
So the Wyandotte, go ahead, Carol.
No, no, go, you, you answer.
So the Wyandotte County Library Board meets quarterly. Um, and, um, so yeah, if there was actually, um, you know, a proposal that was, or a, a potential plan, uh, it could be brought forward, uh, you have representation on the library board. Um, and, uh, but it'd be brought forward to the library board and then the process would begin of, of that, uh, following through to, to, um, look at whether it could handle the needs for a library. I mean, you, you know, not every place is the same. If you haven't ever visited the Turner Library, you would, you know, it's, it's kind of an example of what would be the minimum amount of space that might, that would be used. But, and of course, it's, and then you, you could talk, you could see what criteria was have, have, we had to meet for that facility work.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it, Pat.
Yeah, I'll be happy to work with anybody that wants to have a, a tour of Turner, because obviously, you know, that will be a kind of an example of a smaller entity. But if you plan a big one, I'll be happy to assist with that as well.
So this is my, just a, a couple of follow-ups from earlier questions. Uh, uh, and I'll, I'm going to butcher their last name here, Jack, but Jack Bernath, who is the library director for Bonner Springs, noted in the chat, if you didn't see it, that the current Bonner Springs mill levy, uh, for 2020 was 4.713. So just as reference. Uh, and the second question was about, uh, taxes from Edwardsville to the, to the library district. Uh, just running a quick calculation. So our total value is around, uh, 75,664,000 and some change, but just, but quickly. So that generates on the, the library mill levy at that six point, uh, uh, two, two, uh, one, two, two number, should generate around $470,000, I think, 470, yeah, right at 470, which again is approximately, approximately half of that then gets allocated to the Bonner Springs Library. I don't think that's the formula, but it, that's approximately what, what works out. And those allocations, I think, as mentioned earlier, are determined by the, by the Wyandotte County Board on an annual basis. So they, they put together their budget in these allocations, uh, and, and to see how that works. Hopefully that answered those two questions, but we did put more together, maybe.
Um, would it be possible, I feel like the information on the slides is really helpful. Um, would it be possible to get those in an email so we can read through it and, uh, take a little bit more time with those?
Yes, I've sent Zach Castle's Michael a copy, so they can forward it to you.
Great, thank you.
And I'm happy if you want to, uh, my, my, my email as well, he can add if you need to, uh, contact me.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, if we have no further questions or comments, I would really appreciate Carol, you and Pat coming and sharing all the information about the Wyandotte County Library. Look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. I gotta get my book open again here. All right. Uh, next item on the agenda will be Consider Ordinance Number 1037 Regarding Imminent Domain Proceedings for the Fourth Street Quiet Zone Project.
Uh, Mayor, members of the council, uh, as you know, this has been an ongoing project really since, really, uh, probably late 2019. Uh, early 2020, we started the acquisition process. Obviously, kind of during the heart of the, the COVID, uh, it was difficult to connect with people. Uh, we utilized email and other means. Uh, and then later were able to meet with those individuals that wanted to meet with us, uh, on this project. Predominantly, what we're looking at are temporary construction easements. Um, we're not buying any right-of-way. So we're not widening the width of the street, down Fourth Street, over the railroad. We're staying within the existing. But because we've had sidewalk improvements, we'll be upgrading all the driveways, approaches. Uh, we have gotten temporary construction easements for most, most every property owner. Those have all been donated, so there hasn't been any cost of acquisition. Um, we basically have two properties that we're still kind of trying to finalize. Um, I think I mentioned those, ones at, uh, 111 South Fourth Street. That particular one, we need a, uh, drainage easement, uh, between that property and the building next to it. So, uh, but it's all on that property, 111 South Fourth Street. Uh, we've talked to the property owner numerous times, effectively agreed as part of the project that, uh, if, if the easement was provided, uh, that they will reconstruct, repave the parking lot that is part of that building. So we only need a smaller easement, about 20 feet in width. But, uh, it's kind of as, as compensation for that, uh, because they're going to have to get equipment in there that we would basically clean all that up and repave the entire parking lot and re, restripe it. Uh, the other one is actually on the other side of the railroad tracks on the south side. Um, really the only issue there had been trying to contact the actual property owner. We've been able to do that. Um, one thing that came up that created a little difficulties, uh, was originally the railroad said we can, we needed a 75-foot long median from the railroad tracks. And when they came back and re, uh, rewalked through it again, uh, because that's residential on that side, they're requiring 100 feet. And so we have to replace or relocate their driveway. I think we're all in agreement on that one, we just haven't completed it. So all the other properties, we have agreements. These are the only two outstanding. Uh, we did ask, uh, Oric and Erskine Company, a gentleman named Joe McAvoy, who's fairly new with the company, uh, though we've used him in the past, to just to help us to stay in connection. Uh, again, I think the 100, uh, the, the 203 South Fourth Street, I expect we'll have conclusion on that. Uh, on the other property, we just haven't gotten, uh, really any, any confirmation either way. And we know now that, that right now the UG is planning to put this up to bid, um, hopefully in February. Uh, and so try to have construction during the summer. All of our easements are dated through December 31st, 2021. So we really do need to get this project done and completed. Um, and so that leaves us with these two properties, uh, that we, we at least need to adopt this ordinance. We obviously want to find a solution, uh, if there is one, but we're kind of in the same spot where we need to move forward. Uh, it's a funded project, so debt has been issued for this project in 2019. Uh, and we're kind of ready to move. So that's what brings us here today. I'm happy to answer questions. I know we've talked about process before, so I didn't spend any time really talking about it. But, uh, we did have to first adopt a resolution. Uh, that was done back in October. Uh, it has to be published, uh, I believe, on two occasions. Uh, and then following that, you can then do the ordinance, that has to get published. And then once all that is completed, then you, you can actually go to court and file, file the, the documents if, if you haven't come to conclusion. Even after you file the documents, it's still possible. And it's happened once, uh, in my time here, where we actually filed the documents and the appraisers came on board and, and started their appraisal process. And then the property owner says, okay, I'm, that's good, I'll take, you know, I'll accept the offer. And we terminated it. Uh, obviously, there's costs of the filing fees and, and the, the appraisers. Uh, for the most part, it's a fairly small parcel tract that we're talking about. So fairly limited on, on pricing. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, these are the last two that we have to work with and, uh, just want to move this project forward to conclusion.
Um, Mike, so are, they're just temporary construction easements on both of these properties, is that correct?
Uh, on the, on the 111, there's a, there is a permanent drainage easement for underground piping. Uh, it's basically on the north side along the property line. Currently, there's, there's nothing there. Uh, it's kind of edge, edge of the paving area and there's some, uh, we call it landscape, which is grassed area. So basically, we've come from Fourth Street. Uh, there's an inlet box which actually is in the street, uh, that collects the stormwater. And then it travels east to the, uh, ditch behind there which feeds into Bets Creek. So it, it, it's basically going in, putting the pipe in the ground, covering it back over, is, is what we're doing. But again, our, the offer that we've made was, was, so in lieu of a whole financial offer, and this is not a K-Dot project, so you have a little, you have a little more flexibilities. But, you know, for the, uh, issues, just, you know, getting on the property, doing the work, et cetera, and so forth, uh, that was what had been proposed, was to, basically why they're already out there, we're going to be doing paving, is to repave that parking lot, uh, and, and restripe. It, it's, it's effectively not in very good shape today, but it is paved and, so that's where we're going.
Do you know on, on the two property owners, what their, if, do they have concerns? Or, or what those might be, why they are holding out on it?
Um, they really haven't expressed any concerns. On, on, on the 111 South Fourth Street, uh, they did request some additional information in the agreement, just spelling out what I just said was, instead of just a traditional public drainage easement for perpetuity, they wanted to make sure that the discussions that we have had were technically in the easement document. Typically, we put that in a letter form, but it's, it's fine, that, that goes both ways. We did that, uh, some months ago, probably six months or better ago, uh, and moved forward. The other one, they're, they're really, what they've expressed to us is, uh, they're, you know, they're acceptable with what being proposed. It's, it has been more the owner, the, the owner is not local. He had tenants in there, then I believe a family member was living there. Uh, and now I believe he's returning back to that property is what I understand. And so we've been able to connect directly with him and, um, the only issue is probably have to do a double driveway instead of a single driveway because of just, again, when the railroad kind of changed the plans on us, we had to push the driveway down. So it's really just been a discussion of how wide that driveway will be for that property. Otherwise, I think we, I think we won't come to conclusion on that one. The other one, we just haven't been able to get a response of, of, you know, we're ready to sign and we have concerns and we have issues in the discussions.
Were the property owners given notice about the meeting tonight and that we'd be discussing it?
Uh, no, not specifically. I, I, I mean, I didn't contact them. I mean, I've had a number of discussions with the property owners. They've been advised that we would be taking this next step, uh, but, but not specifically spoke to them, you know, this week that this was going forward on the agenda. But we have said in the past that we would be moving forward if we can't get some resolution, so.
Yeah, I, I think with the, with the deadline looming, I think we need to really prod them a little more. And if this is what's going to take to prod them, I think we need to move forward on it.
I agree with what the mayor just said, and I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 1037.
Mike, I've got a question regarding what was the dollar amount, uh, repaving and restriping, uh, the, the lot versus everyone else, other than the one other one, that's donating the temporary easement? What is the cost, uh, to do that work?
I, I don't know that I have a spec, that I, that I have a specific number, uh, to be quite honestly. I will tell you that the cost just to acquire, so if this were to move forward doing this direction, the, I mean, we would, uh, effectively what the appraisers would look at is what's the value of the land, which is fairly low, uh, for the easement only. And then typically a permanent drainage easement will be at seven, 50 to 75%. I'd give you 75%, probably more typical of what that value is. So let's just say that the land was, and I, I don't want to throw out any numbers thinking that with the value, but just for an example, purpose only, you know, so if it was a dollar a square foot, then the permanent drainage easement would be 75 cents. And that's all that would be provided, just the price of the easement. So I believe that the expense to repave the parking lot would exceed the amount of money that would be offered through, uh, this process. I, I don't know if that helps, but I mean, I just, I just don't have in front of me the exact cost of the paving, uh, estimate from the engineer.
Right, I got you, just, uh, it, I just don't, not sure the, the, that people are going to get for this. I'm not sure why they wouldn't want to donate temporary easements like everyone else has already done.
Yeah, and I, I don't know that the temporary easement, uh, um, I don't know that the, for this particular one, I don't know that the temporary easement's probably the big issue. It's, the big issue is, uh, getting the language, I think, in there to ensure that the parking lot's going to be properly repaved. So there's the area over the drainage easement, that part of it, obviously will be like a full-depth repair, six new inches of, of, you know, the, the pipe bedded, impacted and, and, and I, I think it's specked out for six inches of asphalt over that. Whereas the parking lot itself will be like a two-inch overlay over the parking lot, inch and a half to two-inch overlay over the parking lot. And then of course, striping, uh, typically is, uh, you know, a painted, you know, for parking lots, you generally just use a, a standard paint product. It might be a little higher quality because they'll be striping the road. And so most likely, it would be the same contractor, uh, and they would have, I mean, a little higher quality paint on their, on their project.
If I'm not mistaken, that parking lot's in pretty bad shape now.
Yes, I would, I would not consider it to be in, you know, if I had to put on a scale of one to 10, it, it's probably a four. And there's some areas of it that probably aren't that. And, and again, I will say, our, our intent is always, is our intent is to get to, you know, a final, you know, a final, a know, a final agreement without utilizing the court process because, but honestly, it's expensive for everybody. So, you know, we'll try to move forward without using this. But at some point, we have to move forward, and we're kind of at that at that crossroads.
I second the motion.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 1037. If there are no further questions, would the clerk please call roll?
Knights?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda will be consider authority to award a contract through Kansas Department of Transportation to King's Construction Company, Inc., and commitment of the city funds for the Riverview Crossroads Project. Hooray.
Yes, Mayor. And I don't think I need to reiterate what this project is, the Riverview Crossroads Project. As you know, this is the phase where it kind of moves from the city to KDOT. And so the city prepares through its engineers, the plans and specifications for the project. It then provides all of that information to KDOT. KDOT adds a lot more to it. And then they put that out for bid, which they did. And those bids opened on the 20th. They received, I believe, a total of, I'm trying to remember how many we had, eight bids, with the low bid being King Construction. The construction part of the bid, and just so there's clarity, was $2,859,273. When KDOT does a bid, it also has a separate line item for water, that is water used to wet the road, whether doing compacting materials, et cetera. So the total contract then becomes $2,874,897, about $15,000 is the difference. And that is that is for water. Also included, not necessarily included in in King Construction, but just so you know, that's also eligible for reimbursement through the STP funds, is the inspection services. You'll often see this as CE, construction engineering. And that amount, which it was already, it's kind of a method that's approved through KDOT, is for a total not to exceed 443,163. So at the end of the day, the construction expenses are now at $3,318,060. If you recall, we received up to $3 million in STP or federal highway funds, but it's on an 80/20 match. So when we originally were putting this together, we anticipated at a minimum, we would spend $750,000. We were really expecting, based on what was given to us both by our engineers and by KDOT, to be closer to about $1.5 million. Again, the bids came in very competitive. The bids are very good. And so our cost that we have to write a check now to KDOT at this point is for $664,000. So the good news is the bids came in very good. We had eight bids. All of those bids were from very reputable companies. I would note, King Construction is the same company that built Kansas Avenue. So that portion that we did through the last STP program, so I think we have a high confidence level of the quality of their work. They're out of Oskaloosa, actually, Kansas. And so it would be our recommendation that we that the council approve the authority to award the contract and the commitment of city funds. With that, they will then begin the final contract documents. And I believe we have an early start date of as early as March 1, with, I think, a late start date of around April 1, April 15. I would probably expect this to be maybe closer to April 1, kind of depends how quick everybody can get the bonds and the documents and everything together. But sometimes we have March 1, April 1, with the completion of December, mid-December. I don't remember the exact date, but I believe it's mid-December for the project to be substantially complete. So that is the action for the council, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mike, is this the same company or a different company that we were having some issues in reseeding the grass and everything on the size of Kansas Avenue? Or was that a company that handled items later on?
Well, King, it really wasn't King Construction. I mean, there were some there were some issues with seeding, and we went back and reseeded. But relative to their their commitments, and they did come help do some stuff. But yeah, it was so the way KDOT works is they don't put any type of warranty. So they don't do warranty bonds. So typically, on a city project, we'll put a two-year maintenance bond on a project. KDOT does not do maintenance bonds. So once they release the contractor, the contractor's released. So after that, it falls, if the city wants to do something, it falls back to the city. Personally, I wish they had warranty bonds on projects, but KDOT doesn't do warranty bonds, and we don't really, we can't really force that issue. But I would say overall, King was did a very good job. You know, there was a big, there was a big drainage structure, as you know, on that project, which is part of the Bets Creek tributary. And they really got in and got that part done, done quickly. I think they worked pretty well with the various property owners along there. We didn't really have any significant complaints. There's always, you know, every project like this, you get a few. But I mean, but they took care of everything. They got the project done, actually a little ahead of schedule, as I recall, and did everything they were supposed to. So I would not have any reservations about King Construction. I would tell you, one of the bidders, I would probably have more reservations on, but they were not near being the low bidder, so.
Thanks, Mike. And one thing I asked about this project a long time ago, when we were first discussing it, is the possibility of not having sidewalks on both sides of the road and just saving some tax dollars that way. Is that something that chip is sailed a little bit too far to discuss again? Or is that something that could be considered, especially considering that one side's Bonner Springs?
I don't know that, I mean, I'd have to look at the bids. At this point, I would say it's probably kind of late in process to kind of readdress that. I mean, it is all unit pricing. I mean, we would have to have discussions with KDOT and Federal Highway, whether they would allow that to be removed from the project. So I can certainly make the request. It wouldn't really adjust this at this point. I mean, because everything is unit pricing. So understand, you know, if we have unit overages or unit, you know, so if we have to go over on units, like there has to be more rock, we'll pay an additional. But at the same time, if we run under the unit, so we expect this many tons of asphalt, that's less asphalt, then it'll be under. And so at the end of these projects, generally, two or three years later, there'll be a final billing on the project that that wraps them up. So that's, you know, that's a possibility.
Mine's the thing is, you cannot go back on a contract, although there's no contract been signed. The bids have been made and accepted by the state and file on to us, and we've we're accepting that bid. To change that document now, I think is just, I don't I don't think I would advise it.
Yeah, the challenge could be too, that the the scoring is based on the entire project, which trails and sidewalks score very favorably, is probably one of the key issues as to why we got the project. And so that that may greatly impact the scoring at mark.
And I do remember Chuck asking Randy about that several months ago at a meeting. And he said, he explained the scoring thing, but said since we had multiple sidewalks and pathways, that it might not affect it that much. And and I know we're kind of far along on it now. But again, that's why I asked about it so long ago, and and why we were spending money to put improvements on the Bonner Springs property. One other concern that I had with it, and this doesn't have to do with the funding, but I would like it discussed, maybe at the next meeting, is reviewing Article 8.05 in our ordinances that would require private homeowners to remove snow and keep up maintenance on sidewalks when the city is installing those sidewalks.
I do think, Ms. Kayhar, that that's something that's kind of on our list to it somewhat gets brought up in the next presentation. But the idea and the concept of when you have sidewalks along collectors and arterials, you know, who should be the responsible party, which is different than in a local street in a neighborhood situation. So I don't disagree with you. That's a policy issue we need to have discussions on specifically about collectors and arterials, which is what these are.
I really appreciate that. And I understand the difference between a neighborhood with a homeowners association or a developer putting in a subdivision, and then something that we are putting in after the fact. And so if we could just consider that, I would feel a lot more comfortable. And again, I know it doesn't have to do with the budget tonight, but thought it was a good time to bring it up.
Thank you.
Yeah, Carolyn, I'm going to tell a little story, and I shouldn't do this because it's about our neighboring city. But I have a good friend that lives in that city who who was fined not being able to clear his sidewalk. And and that really rubbed me. But so I understand what you're saying. I just, I really, I really don't want to see that happen to any of our residents. So thank you very much for your comment.
I would agree. I think the day that we start fining people for that type of thing would be the day that some should be looking for a different job. Does the motion need to authorize the city manager? Or is that is that who's the motion awarding the contract? Or who are we authorizing?
Well, technically, I think we could do it that way, especially in this time. I mean, they're just looking for us to authorize this document entitled authority to award contract and commitment of city funds. The first time we did this, we just, we did it, and, you know, through the city manager, because we'd already done all this stuff and already executed all the dollars. And then when we got audited, they said it needed to go back to the council. So the last time we did this, we had the council do this, and the mayor members sign. But when we talked to them this time, they were like, well, you know, the city manager can sign that. But based on my past history, I think probably our best thing is if you want to authorize the city manager to to execute this document, I think that's fine, just as long as we have, you know, a trailer.
I would highly recommend it, just to just to cover, cover our, you know, what, you won't have to come back and do anything later. So.
Yeah. So I think as long as you all authorize the city manager to execute the the authority to award and commitment of funds will be fine.
Chuck, thanks for the question.
Okay. I make a motion to authorize city manager to award the contract and execute the funds for the KDOT commitment of city funds for the Riverview Crossroad Project.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and I will not repeat the the motion. But anyway, if there are no further questions, would the clerk please call roll?
Knights?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda here, presentation related to long-range street maintenance plan. Who's doing this one?
I've got it, Mayor, me and Dustin's on the call. So when I make a mistake, he'll clarify or correct me. But so really, tonight, the purpose is to kind of lay out the format of our plan and kind of discuss some of the concepts of our plan. There's not an action item as to say, well, let's go do this to this street. We'll be coming back in the very near future and say, okay, based upon funding, these are the, these are what we believe would be the programs for 2021, 2022, et cetera. So it's really tonight about kind of the broad base of it. And if there's some input, and we'll put all this into kind of more of a final document, a written document, which is mostly done, but we wanted to have some some input here with the council. So Zach, next slide, please.
So again, you know, what's the purpose of having a street maintenance capital plan? And I know we've talked about this, but it's basically a decision-making guide. So it's not intended to be, hey, we got to do this. And then if we don't do this, we don't do that. It's again, a good guide for both maintenance of our streets and for capital improvements. And we'll have some discussion, you know, what's the, I mean, again, maintenance is more or less the annual things that we do. Capital improvements are when we, you know, expand a road, widen the road, maybe build a new road that's not there today. Those types of things, think of those as as capital improvement. But it's a citywide plan that we will be bringing forward. Next slide.
So the first part of this is really going to be some terminology and some concepts, just so you understand how we've laid out the plan, and really how some of these concepts relate to funding, because they do have funding things. But pretty much all roads are have a classification. And those classifications are were established by the Federal Highway Administration. So they have a a way of deciding how roads should be classified. And then those classifications can be subclassified. But there's generally three classifications, arterial roads, which generally are going to be your highways, your K32. So they're connecting, generally connecting between one state highway and another state highway. They're a little different, urban and rural, but you're trying to connect places broader than just in your own community. So you're trying to get people to, you know, together from place to place. Then you have collectors, as the name suggests, you're trying to collect traffic from a multitude of places and bring them to an arterial, and then the arterial takes them again to the broader network, which, you know, can be an interstate connecting you from Kansas City to St. Louis, or it may be across town. But but that's really the purpose. And then local streets are pretty much everything else. That classification can really have some different meanings based on communities. So, you know, a local street in Edwardsville may be quite a bit different than a local street in Overland Park. So you're generally, mostly, we deal with local streets, but we have all of these. Part of the reason that we need to really consolidate our classification systems and use this system of a federal highway, which we don't really have, we somewhat do it today, but we don't do it today, is that's really where mark funding decisions come in. So in order to get funded under mark, and we'll look at these in a second, you have to be a major collector or higher, right? And you can't just say a street's a major collector. I mean, you have to prove that it's a major collector or higher. But again, a major collector in Edwardsville is not the same as a major collector in an Overland Park. So there, there's some locality to it, but there's still a classification system. And that's how we utilize the federal highway system for funding purposes. Next slide. And again, stop me along the way if you need to. So as you might expect, in Edwardsville, we really only have one arterial street that we maintain, and that's 110th Edwardsville Drive, Fourth Street, between K32 and I-70. I-70 is an arterial as an interstate as its 435. K32 is known as a principal arterial. As you know, it goes, you know, through the whole county into other counties. And we have a little segment, and I'm not sure, it probably comes back in the days when Kansas Avenue was anticipated to connect all the way from Kansas City, Kansas, over to Bonner Springs, K7. So you could have gone from 635 to the K7. That pretty much is no longer on the plans. But a small part in Edwardsville, being from the bridge, the I-70 Bridge at Kansas Avenue, to 94th Street, which is a very small area for us, is still considered in our Is still considered an arterial. And then as you go into Kansas City, Kansas, it's still listed as an arterial. Probably needs to be reclassified at this point, but it's such a small area, it won't make any big difference for us. And no improvements probably ever going to be made.
I have a quick question real quick. Jay, Zach, would you back up there real quick? Hey, um, so in talking with reclassification on roads like that, I'm not kind of percent sure. And why uh, if that section is classified that way, which like what you just explained. But ninety eighth street is a, there's two roads in our city that run all the way from our north border. To our south border. And it's Edwardsville Drive and it is ninety eighth street. And I'm not sure why ninety eighth street would not be considered an arterial roadway.
And it probably could be. Uh, it is, as we'll see if we go to the next slide here, Zach, then. Uh, it is considered a a major collector. So when I'm showing you these collector streets. These are all considered major collectors and therefore they are eligible for uh, federal funding. We also have, though we don't have it on our, we don't show it on our map. We have collectors in the city that probably should be listed as minor collectors. But we just don't really have them classified at all. But as as Mr. Stites said, I mean, you know, two that we have. Are ninety fourth and ninety eighth street. Of course, ninety eighth street goes all the way from Wood End to the north. To our city limits on end to State Avenue, actually on even farther up to uh, parallel. Um, and then ninety fourth street, uh, a- as you know, goes at least, and I'm not, I don't know where I know it goes. Once it hits farther north, I know it gets to State Avenue. Uh, Wood End Road, we. Okay, um, when, I'm sorry, Mr. Stites, you said it to where?
No, I was just saying, not ninety eighth street continues on north, all the way uh, passed up uh, love, past Lumberth Road. But parallel uh, ninety fourth street stops at parallel.
Okay. Uh, and of course, Wood End Road, as we know, is a, is a, you know, it's shown as a collector here. We show it as an industrial street. The these are kind of thing. Riverview, uh, as we know, is is a collector from ninety eight to one hundred and tenth. Kansas Avenue, which, that's how we got it funded for that, you know, as you know, one hundred and second, one hundred and fourth streets are there in sports. So all of those roads that you see there are eligible for federal funding. And they're also eligible under our system for debt financing. So in other words, you can issue debt to to improve any of these roads in the future if we wanted to.
Would one hundred and second street from Kansas Avenue to K thirty two not be considered a collector?
It probably could be, but it's not currently on that classification system. So so today, it's, and and I think these are some of the things that we want to look at and come back is. Because we have to go through a process to submit these as at for a collector under the federal highway classification system. To mark, then mark reviews and makes a recommendation to the state. And ultimately, it gets placed on the federal highway system as a collector or whatever classification. But we would consider, for the purposes of the city, we would consider one hundred and second street sap. As a collector street, and it is on our street program in our code of ordinances. As being eligible for funding for debt funding. So we can't use debt to to maintain any road in the city. That either takes one of two things. If it's not on your your plan, and there's definitions of what can be in the plan. Uh, things that are local streets, like in neighborhoods and things like that. You could issue debt with a voter approval, or we can charter out of that provision. Which a number of cities have done, that say, when it's roads, we're not gonna, we don't necessarily have to take it to the voters for approval. That obviously, that has policy decisions with it, but these are the ones today that are eligible for federal highways. And then the next slide, please. So uh, again, we've talked about classification. It's really more definitional. You consider everything else in the city is either a local or a minor collector for the most part for for us. Um, kind of the next area we've talked about are road ratings, and and I provided you, and I'll do it again. But there there's really a number of systems out there, but the most common ones that are used are what's called the PCI and Pacer. Uh, PCI is probably has more pieces to it. Uh, it is uh, was originally done by the Corps of Engineers, and now it's adopted by ASTN. Which is the American Society for Testing and Materials. So that's kind of the, you see that standard a lot, ASTM. Uh, out there, but it is still basically a visual rating system. Oftentimes, they use this mounted on a van or a truck, which is what was done here by Windock County. So they hired a company. It goes out and literally videos all the road segments. There are components then that they look at and say, this road is rated between a one and a hundred scale. And we'll look at that in a minute. Pacer is probably a little lower tech. In the sense that it generally is a visually done by an individual or a group of individuals. Based upon, again, some standards. This is a one, this is a two. You look at it visually and make an assessment on on the roadway. The good thing about road ratings is it just simply gives you some basis to make decisions. I wouldn't use them to say, well, if it's a rating of X, do this. Because there, you may have a rating that's high, but yet you still need to do maintenance. And you may have some ratings that are low, but because it's a low volume road, it may be completely acceptable. For example, a gravel road is going to get a low rating. It's going to get a one or a two. But it may be a perfectly fine road for the purposes that it's being used. We don't really have any gravel roads. We have some alleyways. But, you know, a gravel road isn't necessarily a bad road. It's just not generally used in an urban. So if we go to the next slide here, so again, Pacer is what we've used. It's what we kind of put in play a number of years ago. We worked with uh, BHC Roads. And an individual that is the former, uh, he was the former uh, county engineer for, I think, Johnson County. And has been working with the uh, kind of the county engineers for a long time uh, in this kind of stuff. You know, again, they use a one to ten scale. But again, I would tell you, a road that's a nine, ten is probably a road that's just been built. But that doesn't mean that it might not need a crack seal at the second year. Because when cracks form, you want to seal them, because the sooner you seal a crack, the less damage you will have to the road. Uh, we're going to talk about putting things on a cycle. So you may have roads that are a seven, eight, that you still want to do routine maintenance on. Because what you really want to try to do is keep your roads in the higher, higher levels, right? You certainly want to keep them above a five, because once you get below that, you're really rebuilding roads. You you're really getting into the most costly type of road maintenance, and that is reconstruction of the road. So the more we can do to keep roads at a current level or or slightly improve them. The better we are, we are in the long range, and we won't spend as much money in pothole filling. Even though we may need to spend it in in other types of pavement uh, maintenance and management. And if you go to the next slide. So, and I know this is hard to see and not and not intended, but you know, we can, we can. And and we're actually implementing GIS here at the city. Uh, our new planner has excellent GIS skills. And we have a lot of data that we can get free from the county, and so we're going to start doing some of this in-house. That that chart that you see to the right that has the bars up and down, that's not percentages. I know it's hard to see. But if you see the green line, basically what it's saying is of our, of all of our road segments, about fifty of them. Are are fair, and either side of that, you're getting to poor or poorer. And to the right side of that, the blues and greens are roads that are in good shape. Uh, and so um, you know, we definitely want to see more road segments. In the green or blue than we do in the red and yellow. So uh, I wanted this in percentages. We've got the data. We just don't have the ability right now to do that. But you can see a picture of the roads. Uh, some of those I might disagree with, whether that segment is a poor. Versus maybe, or very poor versus poor or fair. But I think it gives you a good idea. And I think generally, we would agree with things like Speaker Road. Or uh, Kansas Avenue, that's to the uh, west of uh, Fourth Street, one hundred and tenth. I think we would all share that that road is in poor, the very poor conditions. Um, you know, some of the others, we we might differ a little bit on. The other thing is, if you see, the vast majority of our road segments, one hundred and fifteen of them in this report, are local roads. So again, most of our roads are local in that sense that they're, they're, their functional class would be around a local road. Versus being a major collector or an arterial as it relates to the federal highway system. Again, just want you to kind of get the concept that we can, we can start taking data and we can use it with GIS. And we can get it down to a segment. We can break those segments down kind of as small as we need to and start to address it. Again, the rating has to be kept updated, and this is, you know, roughly two years old now, this data. So we we know some things have been already improved. Uh, and and so they would bump up in the ratings. They've been overlaid or maybe a major repair. And other things uh, probably have gone the other direction. So the next slide, just for comparison, is the PCI rating. And I know I gave you these maps and hard copies. Effectively, think of PCI, that the scales are pretty close. But pretty much in PCI, anything that's forty and below, they're saying is a re- is a road that should be reconstructed. And things, you know, they're forty to fifty five is our four to fives, to sixes. And 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 kind of, so again, very similar that, you know, things that are in the eighty five and up range. You probably don't have to do much maintenance on. If it's below forty, you're going to be rebuilding the road, just to give you an idea. If you look between these two maps and you looked at a hundredth street as an example, this one shows it to being in the very poor range. But as you know, after this rating was done, we reconstructed, we did the, I think, pulverized and placed. An overlay of that street, one hundredth street. And so if you look at the Pacer, it shows it being in good shape. This one, it shows being in poor shape, but that's just a timing issue. We generally will not use PCI. We will stick with the Pacer. But again, the county drove every road in the county and then provided the information. So it's a good secondary uh, method to look and say, okay, yeah, what they're rating it and what we're rating are comparable. So it it's good to to say how we're rating is is working, and it it's kind of an independent review. I don't know if they plan to do more of that or when they're going to do that, but uh, anyways, we have this information for now. Next slide, please. So one of the things we'll get into a little bit later on. And it really gets into as we construct roads. So, you know, as we look at one hundred and tenth street. Uh, you know, finishing that out, as we as we begin to look at ninety eighth street, as we look at the one hundred and seconds. Or any, any of these other roads. So some of the things we have to look at are, you know, what's that road use going to be? Uh, how's it going to be funded? So if it's getting federal funding, obviously, they have requirements. That you have to put into your project of kind of as Mr. Adams spoke about, right? So in order to get it to score high enough to get the money, there may be things we put into projects that somebody might say, why do we put that in there? Well, if you want to get the federal match, then you got to put certain pieces in it. If we don't care about getting the federal match, then we have more flexibility. But so as, and I'm going to come to you with some, some kind of designs. And and kind of get your input on what do you like, right? Uh, whether it has curb and guttered or whether it's a bar ditch, because these decisions help us. In making determinations on how much right of way we have to have, where would utilities be located? What types of utilities do we want in certain types of roads? So we look at that volume. I mean, you could have a low volume road that's very high quality or vice versa. Or you could have two roads that are local, but one has high volume and one is low volume. You might design those differently. Uh, obviously, what the current conditions are, things like hills and visibility and safety issues. But now the big thing is, well, is it going to have transit? So are are you going to have any form of transit on it? Whether it's big buses, small buses, are there going to be transit stops? Uh, are you going to accommodate pedestrians? Are you going to accommodate bicycles on the roadway? Are you going to have connections to trail systems? So all of those kind of things. Environmental, so you don't think of a road being environmental necessarily. But when we go through the mark process, this is the kind of things that get asked. What about uh, water, you know, stormwater detention? Are you going to detain it? Or are you going to put it on pipe and send it down the road? How far, how far away is a river? Uh, if you're building along the edge of rivers or creeks or things, what are you going to do to, you know? Now you've got ice that, you know, on, you you're putting salt on the road. The the salt goes off, goes into the ditch. Goes out into your creeks and rivers. And we're regulated by, again, there's regulations, EPA regulations. On us maintaining the quality of stormwater. So we have to start thinking about those. And then, again, just local preference, but you know, a local road in Edwardsville and a local road anywhere else may not be the same. You know, we have rural neighborhoods that may have curb and gutter, but no sidewalks. You could have neighborhoods that have, that are bar ditches, right? And by that, I mean a real, you know, in neighborhood, uh, not not necessarily along an arterial collector, but a subdivision. So, you know, what do we want those to look like? Because they they will dictate how the overall community develops in the future. So design standards is probably more of a technical issue, but we'll be looking for your input on some of those types of things. Next slide, please, sir. So how do you maintain a road? And and what I'm going to do is kind of, th- these kind of, these are kind of how you scale up, right? So crack sealing is a pretty basic type of road maintenance. Obviously, roads will crack, asphalt will crack. Uh, we we mainly have asphalt roads. We don't have concrete roads. Uh, even concrete roads, they'll need to need certain things. But a crack seal is just like it sounds. It's a rubberized or asphalt material. You clean out the crack, you put this material in the crack. It's fairly inexpensive to do. But it is very important, because the number one thing that kills roads is water. When water gets underneath the surface of the road, gets down in the base, the pavement fails. And then the water gets down in the base, and then that's when you have to dig it all up and fix it. And you you see spider cracking and things. But crack seal, you can't crack seal the whole road, right? You can't take and try to chase the cracks all over the place, so you want to try to prevent those. And the way you prevent crack seals is with cracks. So I think there was a question once, you know, it wasn't long after Kansas Avenue. We probably crack sealed it in its first year, because even new roads get some cracks in. You know, but the basic rule is, when there's a crack, seal it as quickly as you can. So we we use crack seal. Kind of the next step up is seal, you'll hear seal coats or chip seals. We're mainly talking about chip seals. So you've seen parking lots where they use just a spray asphalt. It's um, you know, I almost call it like paint, and it does seal the surface in there, but they generally don't have as long of life. So when we're talking seal coats, we're kind of talking forms of chip seal. Though you could have different levels of chip seal. So you can have really thick chip seal, you can have, there's different products out there. And Dustin is far more knowledgeable of those than I am. But generally speaking, chip seals cost about forty five thousand dollars a mile. And when we say a mile, we're generally talking about a two lane road. So we're not talking lane miles for parking roads. So we're not talking lane miles for parking roads. So if it's a wider road, you know, or a narrower road, that'd be different. But about forty-five thousand dollars to maintain a mile. Kind of the next level up is just an asphalt overlay. We've done a lot of those in our neighborhoods where we we, you may even just mill the edges. You may mill the whole road. It's really a preservation. You're not adding thickness to the road, but you're not reducing the thickness of the road. But you're, it it's, you know, it's kind of like the cake, and you're adding a little icing to to keep the cake looking good and 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 not falling apart. So it it's it's a surface course that you put in place. It adds length and it adds life to the road. It could add thickness, and there's times when you you may put in four inches and come back in a few years and put another two inches in. But generally speaking, when you're talking asphalt overlay, you're about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a mile. Again, we're not talking about curb and gutters. We're not talking about, you know, improvements to the road. We're not talking about widening the road. We're talking about putting asphalt down on what is existing there today. And so there's that, there's the asphalt overlay, about a hundred and fifty thousand. Pulverize in place, and we've used this, again, a Hundredth Street. We used this down on Fourth, Fifth, Sixth Street. We did High Street this way. But what that does is it basically takes whatever's there today and grinds it up. It's kind of like using a tiller in a yard. It just grinds up everything, the asphalt, the rock and everything. You can reshape the road, so if the road has got a lot of ruts in it or things like that and you need to reshape it, you might get a little extra width out of the road, but not much. But you basically take the existing materials, you pulverize it in place, you recompact it. Sometimes you have to add some material, but you're basically taking everything there. That becomes the new base, and then you put asphalt on top of it. So you're putting maybe four inches of this, this assumes about a four-inch asphalt on top of it. So it kind of rebuilds the road. But again, you're not adding, expanding the road. You're rebuilding in place. It's a very effective, pretty cost-effective way of doing roads that have maybe moved beyond just an asphalt overlay or chip seal. But you don't necessarily plan to reconstruct it by widening and putting in curb and gutters and all new drainage and things. You're just rebuilding what's there. And then, of course, reconstruction is the most expensive. You know, I say a million dollars plus a mile. If you look at our last few projects, the Kansas Avenue to Hundred and Second, even even what the one we approved tonight, you're probably looking closer to two to three million dollars a mile. But of course, a lot of that depends on drainage. So if I look at Kansas Avenue, we had, you know, we had to build a large box culvert in that thing. Well, that was, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars. So you can't really say that's what it costs. But, you know, if you think about Kansas Avenue, the bid price for Kansas Avenue is about the same as what we're doing on Hundred and Tenth Street. But the reason is, Hundred and Tenth Street doesn't have any major drainage structure being built. I mean, we're replacing the pipe under the road, but it's pretty straightforward. We have some on River View, but for the most part, there's a lot less drainage structures. And so the costs of those two projects are about the same. But again, what I wanted to show here is, the more we spend at the maintenance level, long-term, the less you have to spend on reconstructing roads. And that's really the goal, is how can we put a maintenance program in so we can, over time, reduce reconstruction? But we're going to have to do reconstruction. You're always going to have some reconstruction. But you can spread those out and be more positive. Next slide, please, sir. And then the big question is, how do you pay for it? That's always the big question. So, you know, for 2021 and the general fund and the public works budget, for all street maintenance, we put in, for street maintenance, right? We put in forty thousand dollars. So that's everything from potholes to to fixing anything related to the street. Pavement, sign, we got a little bit extra for sign. But I mean, for maintaining the streets, we put forty thousand. We then look at the street, Special Street and Highway Fund. So this is money we get from gasoline taxes. We get a a little over two hundred thousand dollars a year. But we're spending a hundred and twenty-five thousand from that fund to go to the debt service fund to pay for long-term debt. Now, that's debt-related to streets, but I think we have to have a discussion is, should those long-term street projects be paid from here? Or should that be part of the debt service, i.e. the tax that's associated with debt service? So we, you know, this fund really should be used for ongoing maintenance, kind of current-year projects versus necessarily the long-term projects. It it's perfectly acceptable. It's done. But I mean, I think it's just a rethinking of where that we get resources. Third one that we use, obviously, is the Special Sales Tax Fund. I think that fund has been used very well. But besides streets, it also funds the capital items in the fire department. As you know, fire trucks are very expensive. And so most of the money we've collected has been used to support fire services. Absolutely should be, but that never goes away. I mean, right, just because you buy a new fire truck today, you're going to be buying a new one in twelve years from now and another one in twelve years from now. And that assumes you don't have to add to the fleet. So we use it for that, and then we use it for parks. And as you know, we've been doing quite a bit of discussion around parks on a master plan, on on not just maintaining grass, but what are we going to do to add to our park systems? You know, new improvements. And so this is how we fund that too. So you have competing interest for that special sales tax. I didn't show, and I say special taxes and fees. So this is not an area, we use tax, right? But what I'm talking about here are things like, do you have a storm, a storm drainage or or stormwater district where you charge a fee for that? And I and I know there are lots of controversies, but they're used pretty common. It really gets to how do you set those up? But we have a lot of stormwater to deal with. We haven't done much, right? By that, I mean cleaning ditches, I mean replacing culverts. You know, we we have to deal with Betts Creek and Mission Creek. I mean, we don't have much of Mission Creek, but it's still in our city where it goes out. So we have to test the stormwater. So we have a lot of stormwater items that that we have. Now, the good thing, if you remember, we went out and did an inventory of our stormwater system. And the good thing is, overall, the structures in our stormwater system are in pretty good shape. So if I remember right, we only had fifteen or twenty percent that were kind of in that failure range where you should be replacing them. So that's good news. That that that's really good. The other things are the use of special benefit districts, like when neighborhoods are built, things like that. That's really more around capital. Where people say, I want to add sidewalks in the neighborhood and streetlights. That's where a special benefit district can be very valuable and be used for that. And then last is debt. But again, debt is a mechanism for long-term. So it's kind of simple, just like in your own household. You don't want, you don't want to borrow money on something for longer than its useful life, right? So when you're borrowing, when you're using debt and you're rebuilding a road and you're talking thirty, forty, fifty-year life of that road, that makes sense. If you're using debt to do annual pavement maintenance, it's probably not a good thing to go out and borrow money for twenty years for an improvement or a maintenance that's going to last five or six or seven. So we we have to be cautious of how we use our debt in that sense. But it it is a reasonable way, and we've actually issued debt for some of these very things, which really takes us to the next slide, so. Okay, so we did issue debt in 2019. There's three areas that are in that debt structure that we looked at. The first one being Fourth Street, which we talked about tonight, three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. That will reconstruct Fourth Street, that portion that's not, that doesn't have curb and gutter today. So they'll replace the street and build the street, put the new sidewalks in, really upgrade that street. I'm hoping it's less than that. We are not paying for the portions that are part of the quiet zone, so that's different. Ninety-Eighth Street, we set aside money to start preliminary engineering, which we've already done, already started. Obviously, we'll be moving into permanent or 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 engineering to actually design the road now that we got funded for the Ninety-Eighth Street project. One of the good things that the other project, River View, coming in under budget, is we will probably take the debt that we issued in 2020, thinking we were going to have a bigger match, and be able to reallocate that over for Ninety-Eighth Street. We have to go through some processes, but instead of having to issue new debt for the engineering on Ninety-Eighth Street, we should have sufficient funding to do that with with what we've already issued. We'll have to look at the numbers. And then the last area, and this really gets into what we may do over the next few years, is we set aside six hundred, it was a little less than this, but interest, but we today have about six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. That was approved in that debt sale, 2019, for streets and drainage improvements. We didn't specifically identify each drainage improvement or street. We did it collectively. We did have to say, like Ninety-Eighth Street and River View and Hundred and Tenth and Fourth. And we named certain streets in that project. But that money was designed to make those kind of improvements that I think we should incorporate into the next few years of programming for street improvements. Next slide, please. So this is a sample program. So this is not necessarily what we're going to come to you with, but you should probably expect something pretty close to this. So if we assume that every year we set aside twenty-five thousand dollars for crack seal, depending on the year, we'd probably get five to ten miles of roads crack sealed. And we have about, I think around forty miles, Dustin can correct me. We have about eighty-something lane miles, so a lane mile is going north as a lane and south as a lane. What I'm talking about here is an actual mile of road, so a two-lane road for a mile both sides. So, you know, if we started setting aside about twenty-five thousand dollars a year, we could have a continuous crack seal program. Pretty easy to do, probably can do it within kind of the budgets that we already have. The next thing, and and Dustin's really been working on this, is so what if we touched every road in the city and put a chip seal on? Even a new road like Kansas Avenue needs to have maintenance on a regular schedule. So you obviously aren't going to put a chip seal on a one-year-old road, but when it's six, seven, eight years, now you're able to do this and keep that road in that, you know, now you're keeping it up there at that seven and eight, right? And you're keeping your roads where you don't have to be doing potholes and chasing chasing repairs. So we're looking at, what would it take to basically touch all of our roads on about a six-year cycle? Which means somewhere four to six miles a year, as I said earlier, forty-five thousand per mile. So you're looking at a hundred and eighty to two hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year to do that, right? So and again, the roads are going to change. Some you're going to be able to do, some you might have to defer. And then we're assuming, and on top of that, we would overlay about a mile of road. So overlays are really roads that probably need more attention than a chip seal. But you may overlay it this year. Now I don't have to chip seal it for six years, but I've improved the road surface. I'm not improving it by making it bigger or wider or safer or any of those. And if you, if you took this program, and if you'll, next slide here, it'll come up here. And it's hard to see, but that's a four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar a year commitment. And as you remember, we're only right now committing less than two hundred thousand dollars a year to our total street program. So we have to think about, how much do we want to do and how do we want to do that? So if we go to the next slide. And we have to remember, unfortunately, we still do have storm drainage improvements, right? Chip seals and overlays don't do anything for storm drainage. We have safety improvements. Guardrails get damaged. We all know we've got hills that are hard to see over. How do we, how do we address those? We do have more sidewalks and trails, and people appreciate those things. But even our earlier discussion, I mean, they still have to be maintained. You know, they they will have to be repaired. Trails, they got to get chip sealed or seal coated or things. They they have the same problems. They're not bearing traffic, but they still just exposed to sunlight and winter weather and summer weather and all those things. So we have to maintain those. And, you know, whether that's in the parks budget or the or the street department budget, it's it's kind of the same. When we chip seal these roads or maintain these roads, we have pavement markings, right? Crosswalks, stops, railway crossings. And, you know, none of these are necessarily big-dollar items, but collectively, they start adding it. Signs and signals. So, you know, we're supposed to have an inventory of every sign in the city, and they're supposed to meet certain reflectivity, and we're supposed to replace them on a regular cycle. And we haven't even been able to get to that. We have three signals in the city. The ones at Fourth and K-32 are thirty, forty years old. They're our responsibility. I know we've talked about other signals, you know, Ninety-Eighth and K-32 or down at Wood End. And all those things are items we have to maintain. And, you know, they just cost money, right-of-way maintenance. So we're talking about mowing the grass. We're talking about clearing the right-of-way. We're talking about trees, money. And then just normal street maintenance. I mean, we're not going to eliminate every pothole. We have to, you know, let's hope we don't have to tomorrow. But we have to do snow removal, ice removal, all those things. So we still have these other things, so to say, well, okay, we got two hundred thousand in the budget now. We'll just shift that over and do two hundred thousand of of chip seal. Won't work, because then I won't be doing any of these things and we'll be in the same place. So I just bring that up in the sense that, overall, we have to think about the bigger cost in programming, how we do that. So next slide here. So again, I think I've already spoke about these. You know, the River View Crossroad Project is kicking off. That'll be a nice improvement. Hopefully, the Fourth Street will be kicking off, or, you know, engaged on Ninety-Eighth Street. And our goal is that that project would let as early in fiscal, federal fiscal year 2024 as possible, which basically September of 2023. That sounds a long ways off, but remember, KDOT has a twenty-eight-month cycle to take a project from. You get the money to build the project, so we're already getting into that timeframe. And just a little project, the River View Pipe Replacement, that's where we've had the the metal plate for way too long. We finally, unfortunately, one of the property owners lives in London and everything, and kind of difficult getting those. But, you know, we have other projects ongoing at the same time. And the next slide. So really, questions and comments? I I would say this, the, that six hundred thousand plus that we have in that, in our current 2019 bond program, I I think what we'll probably be doing is coming back as part of funding for the next three years, maybe less, maybe more, but but that's six hundred and thirty-five. We, we're going to focus, how do we use that on the items we talked about? Whether it's chip sealing, pipe repairs, and kind of use that as part of our program, which might allow us to ease into, how do we fund the rest of the the program? But but get us going and and start this program going down. So I know that was a rather long presentation, a lot of information, so I will answer questions. I know Dustin's on the line, and and he's, he he can certainly get into all the technical pieces if we need to. There he is, looking good.
Did I understand right that we did get final approval for the Ninety-Eighth Street grant?
Yes.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, I think I, Mr. Adams can verify, but I'm I'm fairly certain it went through the whole, the whole KDOT project. I mean, they've already started contacting us. So next step will be us authorizing an engineering agreement with BHC. We're assuming BHC, they've been our partners on these things. And so we'll probably be bringing that back as early as the next meeting.
Um, would it be possible, I know we had a lot of community support in that project and just getting on and giving comments and in into getting that grant approved, would it be okay to do? Would it be okay to do like a social media outreach or something just to let them know that their time was not wasted? That it it did go through?
I actually sent an email to every person that did a response, uh, telling them exactly basically that, that we appreciated the comments. The one project got funded, the other project didn't. Uh, I got some feedback. Thanks for keeping us informed. Some of the emails came back that, you know, they they bounced back, they weren't valid or whatever. So we we only have the information to put in, so somebody's going to put an email in. And, you know, they used it, but they didn't necessarily want to be contacted. But I but yes, I think we absolutely want to continue doing that outreach and communication. And this is where design will really come into play. Because I think ninety eighth street, and this just, you know, surfaces, it may be a kind of a two part design. And I say that in this sense is today, maybe you built it like you do Kansas Avenue. But I think there's certainly commercial development that will occur along that corridor, especially as you get up near I seventy. You've got some very large parcels of land. And so you want to make sure that we're reserving the ability that that road, you know, whether it be right turn lanes or expansions at an intersection or things like that, that we don't narrow ourselves in to a road that serves today, but it's not thinking down the road a little bit. I think that one will be probably more important along that because you have the ability. I mean, unfortunately, when you look at Edgewood Drive, one hundred and tenth street, kind of south of where we're working now, because the the number of driveways are there, the proximity of houses, all those things in that area pretty much limits your design options. But with ninety eighth street, at at, you know, you you still have some of that, but you've got probably more flexibility on ninety eighth street going north than you have in some other roads. So absolutely the important stay connected. Other comments just about, and again, we're we're going to put this into more of a written form. Uh, you know, and it's something we can get out and use it as a policy document, incorporate it into our comprehensive plan, even as a section. But this this is kind of the format and the layout that we see. And then, you know, really on an annual basis, one of the things we should be doing is a capital, you know, a five year or ten year capital program. And each year budget time saying, and this is what we're funding for this year. And technically, it should be going to the planning commission to ensure that those capital expenses are aligning with our comprehensive plan. So it it just takes work and time and people, and we don't always have that. But hopefully, conceptually, we're on the track that y'all wanted to see us go down. So again, when you make a decision about why did we spend money here? We can all say this is why we spent the money at this place in this day. And it's not just the rating. Obviously, rating is a part of it, but it's that's not the only the only reason you would do one road over another. Mayor, I don't have anything else on that.
Very good. Yeah, that's thank you very much for that report, Mike. And I we anticipate working on this in the future. Thank you very much. Okay, advisory reports. So if you're not run out of space yet here or run out.
I I will. I got a few things on on here. Uh, uh, I I I'm going to try to take these in easy format and get to the hardest one at the end. But number one, we have W twos for everybody. So, uh, we have those here at the office. If you want to pick them up, we could also, I guess, scan and send those to you from from the system. So, uh, you know, you're you're that all those high dollars we pay you to be on the city council, uh, you got to get a W two for it. So, uh, we we can, just let us know if you want to come by and get them. We have hard copies. You want them to send it, just just directly contact Zach and and we'll we'll get it to you whichever way you need it. Um, we did have our first planning meeting of the year with the planning commission uh, with Bradley, you know, who's new with us. Uh, we kind of put them on notice that we anticipate a very busy year. Not necessarily by projects, but we need to rewrite our subdivision ordinance, which again gets down to roads, sidewalks, and those things that that we just haven't. I mean, it was done in nineteen seventy four. That's when the subdivision was. So you can anticipate a lot of things have changed since then. We need to not replace our comp plan, but obviously it needs updating. Uh, just it it was done in two thousand twelve. And so, uh, I think that group will be very busy. I I told them to expect being at every meeting, even if we don't have projects. Uh, relative to projects, uh, we we will be going to the planning commission from the on the go project there was, you know, y'all remanded it back to them to talk about uh, uh, traffic, traffic impacts. We have had a meeting with KDOT. They're kind of looking at it. They didn't seem to feel there was any significant issues with adding that extra lane, but they still got to look at it. Uh, we've been contacted and expect maybe this will come up in the next couple of months. If you remember the site, one oh six hundred Cole Drive, which was the first site where all the dirt was taken out of by, uh, forgetting the name contractor, um, that so he's been working with the a a property person to potentially develop that site. And so, uh, we they've contacted us, got information, so we hope to see something in there. Um, agenda format, uh, we may change the format a little bit. One of the things, uh, that we may want to do, not necessarily that we do a lot, but you know, go ahead and put the 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 minutes and the pay the bills in a consent agenda format. There may be some other items. We don't do a lot of that, but maybe it makes it a little easier, especially in a virtual world. So we just we just want to relook at the just is it working and and maybe do that? If you got any comments, let us know. Um, I think Zach's going to touch on a couple of items with the cemetery. Um, I know it was brought up about community service. Uh, we we didn't have that on tonight's agenda, but we are gathering some information. We'll be making a report to you probably at the next meeting, if not before. Uh, just wanted to gather some other information from other places and also our court, how many people are coming through from where, et cetera, and just getting all that together. And then the last item, and I know some of y'all have, this is an item. I did meet with the sign company about doing a sign at Fourth and K thirty two. Uh, we think we can do it without it being in the right of way and with actually out without getting on any private property. Because as you know, the right of way north of K thirty two is city right of way. And if you remember, the old Fourth Street alignment shifted. And so we think we can get it placed in there. Uh, and so I I wanted to bring that up. We're still working on that. If you have comments, I would like to hear those, whether it's tonight or over the next day or two, about moving that forward, if that's still where we think the best place for it is. Um, you know, that's going to have the you're going to have the most vehicles a day going through there. I don't, you know, we know that we have three or four thousand vehicles go north and south there at at Fourth and K thirty two, where they're going north and more south and go north today. That's really the primary group that we're trying to get. You're probably not going to have great visibility if you're going eastbound. Uh, quite honestly, just because everything, it's at that intersection. So mainly it's going to be people going westbound and people that are going north, south, or stopped at the light that would have the most visibility. So I know several people have interest in that. I'd love to hear from you, and we can do that off long. Um, and I think that is all that I have. Again, I know Zach wants to, I I know there were some comments about cemetery, and I think he's going to give a just a quick be feedback and I'll answer questions if there are any there.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Zach, go right ahead.
Yeah, just real quick, I wanted to provide the group an update. Um, I had brought this up. This was kind of part of the planned activity for twenty twenty one anyway. And we discussed short term and long term projects over at the CPPS in January. Um, tomorrow, I'm going to be meeting a a a monument restoration company to kind of walk us, walk me through some of the costs and what exactly would be involved in if we were to do kind of a a comprehensive project in that area related to uh, monument maintenance, specifically the the older section of the cemetery where we may not be able to establish ownership. That's specifically where the area is where we're talking about. Um, and as I was, that, you know, those costs get firmed up and we start to put together kind of longer term capital plans for the cemetery, that'll get ran through the CPPS and then brought up to the council for review and action at the appropriate time. But that's scheduled for this week, and yeah, we'll get the ball rolling on that. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Zach. All right, moving on to Chief Mathies.
Hi, yes, uh, just in addition to our quality workforce, the city's really made some a a couple of invaluable investments. And one is, uh, it's been almost a year, is our K nine program. And starting this year, it will be our drone program. We have the drones in and we're getting trained and all that sort of stuff. And that both of those programs are really just really value add for us. So what I want to do is not to belabor some of these meetings, but I'm going to send out a PowerPoint first on the K nine program, and you'll get that via email. Take a look at it, and then if you have any comments or questions, certainly next time we get together, uh, I'll be able to answer those. Uh, it's pretty self explanatory, and then we'll do the same thing for the drone program once we get that off the ground.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Wyder.
Uh, not a whole lot to report. We got through a service, memorial service Saturday morning. We're just kind of pushing through, getting ready to start looking at some controlled burning in the next couple of months, try to help more with the park development and clearing of property there. That's about all I have to report at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, Dustin, Public Works. Any any comments?
Uh, I just wanted to comment on our our talks about our seal plan and stuff. Uh, Michael and I have been working on that together some, and, uh, uh, we talked about potholes and stuff. I just want to say that these type of plans are how you fix potholes. Uh, you don't fix them by shovel and mix in there. You fix them by fixing the drainage and preventative maintenance seals, crack seals. Uh, that's how you really fix them properly. So it's exciting to get this thing started off, and I think it's a good step for Edwardsville uh, and our our road program. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Dustin. Lisa, do you have anything?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the council. We'll start with Chuck Adams.
Hi, just a couple of things. Um, Mike, when will we get to meet Bradley? It'd be good to to be introduced to him sometime.
Uh, yes, uh, well, I think we we, yeah, I think we did a virtual meet with him. Uh, I thought at the last meeting. Um, I I don't know if Bradley's on here tonight. I think he's on earlier. Uh, but if you're by City Hall, uh, he he is in the same office that the previous uh, person was, uh, great to meet him. Um, and we'll try to find a opportunity to introduce him one on one. I know he's had a he's had a chance to meet a couple of the council members. So we'll try to figure that out.
Okay, and, um, the resident during the public comments, the resident that has restricted it by closing that road, we've restricted his access to his property. Um, you know, how fast can we move on that? Is there what do we need to do anything as a body to get that moving quickly?
I would say, I mean, since it was the body that adopted the resolution that in order to to cancel a resolution, it'll take action by the city council.
Yeah, we we need to, we need to, uh, look at that, get serious about it pretty quickly. So we don't, you know, we we can make a decision and he can either, uh, get, you know, access restored to his property through the through the existing mechanism, or he knows how to plan for the future.
Correct. And I would just say, I think, and I think Zach said this earlier, I mean, so he 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 has access. I mean, so he still has access. It was, it's really that he backs trailers in and out, and so it makes it more difficult, uh, you know, for him. I mean, that that that's broadly the complaint is that it makes it difficult for him to have, uh, you know, be able to pull up and back at this trailer. And that's that's the challenge, not not necessarily that he doesn't have access to and from his property.
That's all I have.
Good, thank you. Carolyn, you're next.
You're muted.
Sorry, I forgot. Uh, Zach, thank you for the update on the CPPS board meeting. Um, I think that's a great idea to walk through with that, um, memorial maintenance team. And and if we can find a way to prevent those, um, future issues from happening, so we're not fixing them time and time again, I think that would be fantastic. But I'm really glad to hear that there's, um, a plan coming in place for short term and long term care for that those properties. Um, hopefully, the the city cemetery and the Stony Point as well. Um, looking forward to hearing about the community service policies and procedures coming up in the next meeting. And it's kind of, I think it's a great idea that you guys are comparing to other communities to see what's working for them so that we have a really, uh, quality system in place for folks who choose to serve our community in that way. Um, I I was going to ask about the the fellow on Speaker Road as well as, um, if we could have the Public Works or someone talk with him about finding a good solution that would work for him. And, um, I realize he has access to his property, but my understanding from what he commented before was that he drives a drives a truck and trailer. And so, um, that that would really limit him getting access to his home, um, before and after work. And so if we could just try to find a solution, that would be great. And then, um, lastly, thanks so much for the street report. Mostly, I'm excited to implement a regular plan in maintaining our streets and getting those repaired. I think that, um, the whole council and community, everybody, um, knows that that's been a long time coming, and it's really exciting to see the beginning of those issues getting fixed. So thank you for your time on that. Um, Mike, I'll get with you about the library presentation. I felt like mostly it showed that, uh, the Turner Library is getting more serviced because they have one right there in their community. And so maybe we could discuss as a council how our city could get better served through, um, our tax dollars that are going to libraries. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Garrett?
I I don't think I have. I was just going to mention on that library thing, I did appreciate that presentation from them. It it cleared quite a bit of stuff up with me. I had a question I wanted to ask them, and I didn't think about it in time, but I was wondering where the reciprocal payments are distributed. When they get reciprocal from Missouri and Johnson County and so forth, could they show us somehow, and I might have to ask them, could they show us how that money is distributed? And is it any chance that that could lower a little bit? It might be kind of a dumb question, but you know, it seems like Carolyn's hitting on something when she says it. Maybe there needs to be some kind of a formula on the on the percentage of people that actually use a library. I mean, it's a difficult thing. Anyway, that's that's the thing. I'll talk to Mike a little bit about that and to the mayor about it. That that's all I have. Thank you.
Um, Garrett, I'll comment about that when when I make my comments. So anyway, um, Margaret, you're next.
Uh, yes, I'd like to echo Carolyn's comments about the road maintenance plan and, um, thank Mike and Dusty for working on that. I think, um, most of the city would agree. A lot of the streets, maybe they're decent, but a lot of the streets need some work, whether it's the potholes fixed, um, patchwork done, crack and seal, whatever the case may be. Um, just even if you have to go fill some potholes for the meantime, there there are still several out there. So I'm excited that there is going to be some movement going on with that. Um, second, Mike, you mentioned the sign. And I know I don't know if it was discussed. I think it was Chuck Adams brought it up, maybe purchasing two signs. I know that no decisions are going to be made, but, um, it's exciting that there is an available place there at the Fourth Street K thirty two intersection. place there at the Fourth Street K-32 intersection. I personally believe that probably would get the most views. But if there would still be wiggle room for maybe a second sign, maybe there could be a second location. So I don't know, just, there's, like I said, nothing needs to be discussed tonight, but um maybe we can discuss it at a later time. Um, third, I, I, I appreciate the library presentation. Um, a lot of information. I'm still pretty foggy about a few things. I, I, it would have been nice to have that prior to the meeting, just to at least review a few things, but I did, I have a couple of questions. Mike, what does Edwardville pay to the unified government for a library tax a year, a park?
Well, so we, so we, on the, on the Wyandotte County Library Tax, that, that six point one two two mils equates to about four hundred and seventy thousand dollars annually. And out of that, about two hundred and thirty-five thousand, roughly half of that then gets distributed to Bonner Springs, and the other half is, you know, effectively distributed to the rest of the library district. You know, as they say, they don't own the buildings or
Right. So does, does Bonner pay Wyandotte County?
They do not, no. They have their own library board, and they assess, they assess a tax. It, it's built into what you see in their city tag, but it's still a separate tax of about four point seven mils each year that they use. So if you, if you looked at their budget in Bonner Springs for the library, you would say, wait a second, the amount of tax revenue doesn't equal the total cost of the library. But if you take what they raised locally, plus the two hundred and thirty-five thousand that comes to it from the Wyandotte County Library Board, then that effectively equates to what their budget is for the library. So I don't know the exact numbers, but, but so they're funded by two sources. They're two big sources, right?
Right, right. So has it ever been thought about or, or catered with Edwardsville joining the Bonner Library? I mean, we're a school district together. I, I don't know. I, I just, it's interesting, and I've learned, so. Go ahead, Mayor.
No, I, I'm not so sure you can withdraw from the Wyandotte County Library and then go to Bonner. You see what I'm saying? And, and because it sounds to me like that's what you're, you're suggesting, and I don't think that can be done.
So let me just say this. I mean, I
I won't, I won't say anymore.
No, no. I, I mean, it, it, it's a good point. So because the Wyandotte County Library has a Wyandotte County Library, which everybody refers to as the PEP, that was done through a vote. So statutorily, the, the, at the time, the county commission uh called an election. There was a petition or something. They called an election to create the Wyandotte County Library, which only included those people that lived in what we refer to as PEP. So it did not include anybody that lived in the USD five hundred school district. It didn't include anybody that lives in Bonner Springs city limits. So that, that group of people uh ultimately voted in favor of creating a Wyandotte County Library Board. So in order to alter that, without getting too deep into the weeds, would, would take some form of an election.
Sure. I just, I know a few, a few of those pages with those charts where it showed Turner, it, it showed this separate into, and it showed Edwardsville and the numbers. And a part of me think, okay, what are they using these Edwardsville numbers for? Because you don't necessarily know where these Edwardsville residents are going to these libraries. But yet we're paying Bonner all this money. And you see where, I'm just confused where these dollar amounts come from, but that maybe is a later discussion, so.
I think there is some more, uh, and, and I plan to get with, with Carol. I, I don't think, so let me say this. I think this discussion that, that we're having is broader than us. I think it's happening in other places. I mean, it is a, for lack of a better word, it, it's, it's a difficult process, a little convoluted, right? And I mean, I don't think we're kind of the only ones. I mean, I think there's been discussions in Piper, right? I know Piper's not a, we're unique, we're a separate city. But, you know, people in Piper, well, how do we get a library? How's this tax going? Or even Turner, so you can, well, we provided the building and but you're providing this, but what do we get? People in between? I mean, I don't know what the people, you know, I mean, if, if you look at, and I don't know if some of that information was by zip code or by city limits. I, 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 I think your point is there was some great information there. We probably just need to drill down into it a little bit more, and so my plan
Right, right.
Follow up with, with Carol to better understand those slides, to make sure the information that was presented uh that we understand with the basis of that information. So I'll be, I will be following your, her on that. So we can answer your questions and, and that.
Perfect. Thank you so much. That's all I have.
Okay, Chuck?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Katsimer Stites is, is, he had some tech issues on his head, so he's actually listening in on my phone. He said he didn't have any comments.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Um, uh, my comments, I'm gonna, I'm gonna address Garrett and your, your question about, um, oh my gosh, what was your question about, about, um, wasn't about library, was it?
Was it about the reciprocal?
Oh, yeah. Reciprocal is a trade, it's not money. In other words, the, the Kent City, Kansas and Wyandotte County Library belongs to a, a regional uh group of Missouri and Kansas, and, and they, they uh, they ship books or materials that are requested that may not be available in their local area. So they ask their local library to, to acquire that information, and so it's a, it's a trade thing. Uh, I don't believe that there's any, we, just, it's just like when you go and check out a book, you don't pay money. So the reciprocal thing is a, is a, is a regional organization where they trade. Does that make sense?
No, but then I'll accept that for now. I'll, I'll
More complicated than that.
Uh, yeah, I, I wanna have to kind of think on this a little bit.
Well, they don't, they don't charge money, so there's no money to be, to be collected.
Okay, but I'm still paying that mill to
Yeah.
It's getting, it's getting, it's getting late, Mayor. I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop now. We can discuss this over a cup of coffee or a wine.
Very good. Uh, my comment about the, the gentleman that lives off of Steel Road is uh, the council followed the recommendation of staff to close that road, and now you have an individual complaining that he can't access his driveway when he can. And I think you're setting a dangerous precedence by, by rescinding something that you've already made a decision to do, and I'll let that go. There's no, there's no debate about that. That's just my feeling. Um, and, and so other than that, I, I do appreciate Mike and Zach and, and everybody's work, especially on this long-range street maintenance. Uh, that um, street maintenance was an issue of mine way back in the early nineties, and I tried to create a a, a system to where we, we had a better street maintenance, and it got sidetracked, and and now we're back at it anyway, and I, I, I do appreciate it. Thank you, Mike. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you and good night.
Yeah, no problem. I'll cut you loose.